We appreciate you joining us, appreciate those who joined us on the line. We'll call this meeting order. I'm David Martin, Chair of the Commission on Teacher and Administrator Education Certification and Licenseur in Development. The commission present at the Central High School Building, fourth floor boardroom, three fifty-nine Northwest Street, Jackson, Mississippi, three nine two oh one. This regular meeting commission is being held today, Friday, September sixth, twenty twenty-four, at ten AM. Pursuant to Mississippi code annotated twenty-five dash forty-one dash five with some commissioners present via teleconference. Notice of this meeting which included date, time, place, and purpose of the meeting and identified the location above the public has been posted. Audio recordings being made of this meeting and minutes of this meeting will be recorded. Meeting is called to order at ten AM on Friday, September sixth, twenty twenty-four. Got to establish a quorum. As I call, commission members, please state your location for your presence of this meeting. Dylan Baldwin.
President, Oxford, Mississippi.
Thanks, sir. Jamie Creel.
Present, Jackson, Mississippi.
Rebecca Gray.
Rebecca Gray, present, I use Mississippi.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Hill Taylor. Miss Taylor. John Howard. Mr. Howard. Kim Hubbard.
Present, Lowood, Mississippi.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Teresa Jero. Dr. Jero. Dr. Bernal Kelly.
Present, Jackson Boardroom.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm present, Jackson Boardroom. Dr. Murphy? Working on his doctor.
Oh, present, any other decisions?
Thanks, sir. Dr. Teresa Poole.
Present, Hartford, Mississippi.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Etta Taplin.
Present, Wilson, Mississippi.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Aaron Wilson.
Present, lumber, Tennessee, Mississippi.
Thanks, sir. All right, we have a quorum. Other commission is present at the location stated for conducting a meeting through in-person and teleconference meetings. We've gone to item three, approval of minutes from the July twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the commission. Entertain a motion for approval of minutes from that meeting. Teacher administration, education certification, licensure, identify yourself for the record.
Motion is approved, Kim Hubbard.
Thank you, ma'am. Need a second?
Second, Aaron Wilson.
Thanks, sir. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. If you're online, be sure to unmute.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item four, approval of hearing of subcommittee minutes from July twelfth. Entertain a motion for approval for hearing subcommittee minutes on July twelfth. Members present were Dr. Teresa Poole, Mary Hill Taylor, and Miss Etta Taplin. Please identify yourself for the record.
Teresa Poole, um, motion is approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Etta Taplin, you can say aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Ayes.
All right, any opposed? Motion carries. Our approval of hearing subcommittee minutes from August seventh, twenty twenty-four. Entertain a motion for approval. Members present that day were Miss Etta Taplin, Kim Hubbard, and Dylan Baldwin. Please identify yourself for the record.
Motion is approved, Kim Hubbard, are you approved?
I heard Miss Hubbard first for motion. You got a second?
Second, Dylan Baldwin.
Baldwin for a second. Thanks, sir. Any discussion? For vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Ayes. Ayes.
Any opposed?
Ayes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Need your location.
Good morning, I apologize, I just joined.
Good deal, we just noticed that. What's your location?
I am in Choptown, Mississippi.
Choptown, thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to item number six. Approval of hearing subcommittee minutes from August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Entertain emotional approval. Members present that day were Bernal Kelly, William Murphy, and Rebecca Gray. Be sure to identify yourself for the record.
Motion is approved, Bernal Kelly.
Thank you. Need a second?
Second, Rebecca Gray.
Miss Gray got you by just a hair. We'll put her down for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Ayes.
Ayes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item seven, entertain a motion of approval for the agenda. Please identify yourself for the record.
Bernal Kelly, motion is approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Need a second?
Kim Hubbard, next. Thank you.
I heard Miss Hubbard. Yeah, I heard it. Any discussion on the adoption of agenda? We go on to the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Ayes.
Ayes. Ayes.
Ayes.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, MDE updates. Dr. Corey Murphy.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Just good morning, everybody, but no updates today.
There we go. Moving along at a record pace, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to item nine, approval of the University of Southern Mississippi's request to modify its existing approved licensure track program for administrators through K twelve. Dr. Murphy.
Yes, sir. This represents just common updates that our institutions make on their programs that have been approved by the State Board of Education as recommended by the Licensed Commission. And basically they're making certain that the courses that one of us engage in represents the core that that's required in the field today for the most part. And so what you see before you are courses that will be replacing those that that are existing for the most part. It's been reviewed by our Ed Prep Division and recommendations for approval.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll entertain a motion of approval for University of Southern Mississippi's request to modify its life track program for administrators K twelve. Please identify yourself for the record.
Motion is approved, you have a vote.
Thanks, sir. Need a second?
Second.
Second, William Murphy.
Got Mr. Creel, which got you by here. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Ayes. Ayes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to kind of jump back for just a minute and go back to M D updates because we have a visitor here with us. If you guys don't want, we'll let him introduce him. Dr. Murphy, I'll let you kind of do the introduction.
Yes, sir, thank you. So the update I had did show up, so yeah. A prior engagement for the most part, and so glad he's able to be here today. It's our new State Superintendent of Education, Dr. Lance Evans. And just wanted to to give you an opportunity to say hello and whatever else you'd like to say to the members of the Licensed Commission.
Absolutely.
Did you mean to sit there?
Yes.
First off, I'm sorry, it's Friday. That's why I don't have a tie on, so I apologize. But thank you so much for being here. Thank you for taking time to be on this commission. I appreciate you so much. Thank you for pushing Mississippi forward. I would tell you, the work that we do here, you know this, I tell all our people here, is the single most important work that you can do because we're working on educating our youth. I always have a saying, we create pathways to success when no bed ends for all of our students. And the important piece, we have to make sure that our educators are where they need to be and they have the services they need to be. We make the decisions that they need in order to push that that forward because while Mississippi has had great success academically in the past several years, we can never, never go backwards. Can never lower expectations. And I always tell people, my my single greatest fear is ever going backwards. So thank you so much. I appreciate y'all taking, taking time to let me come by and say hello. And happy Friday and have a great weekend. And I'm not walking out on you, but I do have a meeting downstairs.
We appreciate it. Yes, sir. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, yes, sir. All right, we'll jump over to item ten, approval of twenty twenty-five dates for regular meetings of Licensed Commission. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, sir. These are the dates that represent, of course, your regular meetings. Aside from those that you engage in that relates to special call meetings and so on and so forth. And so just wanted to bring those early so that we can start preparing for next year.
So those are far enough out, take a look at those. And we've always done a great job of having people here, but having enough to make sure we have a quorum and then, of course, been able to handle hearings and whatnot, so.
Yes, sir. And you'll notice January, of course, that date has moved out one week and that I believe that Friday fell on the week that individuals were returning from, I guess, Christmas break, New Year's, things of that nature. And also July, the Fourth of July was around that 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 first week for the most part. So those are the only two dates that wouldn't fall on the first Friday.
And I don't know everybody's administration, but I just mentioned it, July was eleven. Normally I may run into a mess or something.
Okay.
FYI, we can make you work that way. All right, so those are those dates. We would kind of mark those in your calendars and keep up with them. We'll entertain a motion of approval for proposed twenty twenty-five dates with the regular meetings of Licensed Commission. Please identify yourself for the record.
Teresa Poole, commission is approved.
Thank you, ma'am. Need a second?
Second, Bernal Kelly.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? Move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Ayes. Ayes. Ayes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item eleven, approval of ratifications of agreed orders and or voluntary surrenders. Mr. Scott DeYoung.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. Good morning, everyone. Officer Educated Misconduct has two agreed orders that we would like to present to you for consideration of ratification. In the first matter, four one-two, educator license number four one-two zero zero one, Sarah Ward. On or about August twenty-first, twenty-four, Educated Misconduct received an appendix C from the Winona Montgomery Consolidated School District alleging violation of a standard ten. Respondent Sarah Ward admits violating the standard ten of the Mississippi Educator Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct on or about August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four by resigning or otherwise breaching her contract and abandoning her position as a licensed employee with the Winona Montgomery Consolidated School District without first being released from contract. Upon execution of the agreed order, the respondent shall immediately be deemed to have relinquished relinquished her educator license number four one-two zero zero one and all privileges belonging to said license. Respondent's license shall be relinquished, suspended, or otherwise surrendered from date of ratification of the commission through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Respondent will be eligible for reinstatement upon conclusion of suspension period and must petition for reinstatement of respondent's educator license without the necessity of a hearing. The second matter, educator license number three two six three zero seven, educator Brock Peaton. Respondent, upon execution of the agreed order, respondent shall immediately be deemed to have voluntarily surrendered his educator license number three two six three zero seven to teach in the state of Mississippi. to teach in the state of Mississippi and all privileges belonging to said license. Respondent's license shall be surrendered from the date of ratification by the commission through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the respondent shall be eligible for reinstatement upon conclusion of this period and must petition for reinstatement of educator's license pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated thirty-seven three two fourteen A. Respondent does hereby fully, completely, and finally release the Board, the Commission, and Mississippi Department of Education, agents, servants, or employees from all, any and all claims, charges, demands, damages, costs, expenses, actions, cause of action of every kind whatsoever in nature, which the respondent may now or hereafter have, which are in any manner whatsoever related to the agreed order between respondent and the Board and the Commission. Upon approval of the Commission, this document is a public record and shall be recorded as a final order of the Commission. That concludes the agreed orders that the Office of Educated Misconduct requests that you consider for ratification.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, we'll entertain a motion for approval of the ratifications of agreed orders and/or voluntary surrenders. Take a motion under advisement. Identify yourself for the record and your motion. Jamie Creel. Motion to approve. Creel. Need a second?
Second, Bernell Kelly.
Kelly, with a second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item twelve, getting ready for our adjournment. A reminder, our next regular scheduled meeting is Friday, November first, twenty twenty-four. As always, appreciate everybody making the time and serving on the subcommittees and the time to be for our regular meetings. Entertain a motion to approval for adjournment. Please identify yourself for the record.
Jamie Creel, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Creel, we got a second?
Second. William Murphy.
Second for Mr. Murphy. Thanks, sir. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at ten eighteen eight a.m. And appreciate everybody's service. Y'all stay warm, dry, and safe out there. Have a good day.
Aye.